We'll call the meeting holder. We'll call Chisman, present. Lefler.
Yep, here.
Farron, absent. Meyer, absent. Thompson.
Here.
We'll call three, Brethden. Two, absent. And I need a motion to approve the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
One second.
Motion made by Chisman, second by Thompson, to approve the agenda. A's.
Sorry, I'm late.
Three A's. Library report from Cheryl.
Okay, well, this is booting up. We'll go ahead. Thank you all for giving me a few minutes of your -- well, I'll try not to make it long because I know you've got other things to do tonight. But when I start talking libraries, I've got a little presentation I'm going to give to you. It talks about our library budget and our information that we've done over the last year and look at not only our library but other libraries as well. I've been here for almost three years. And let me see, that's going to move up here. By my screen. Whoops. Why does it showing that instead of my -- what I have on the screen? Yeah, PowerPoint, there we go. PowerPoint. There we go. Anyway, when we talk about the library, library funding, library services programs, what the city actually pays for the library to run every year, a lot of people don't even understand why you have a library. It's part of the Iowa code that every city has to provide for a library and fund a library. If they don't, they have to contract with other cities. Kirkville does not have a library, so they contract with Eddieville to run a library. Why is that not showing? It's showing up down there. It's showing up on my screen, but it's not showing up there. Let me do the HDMI cable to input here right quick.
It's very, very small.
It was up earlier. Hmm?
Is that it right down there?
No, that was -- it's right there is the PowerPoint. And when I try to open it, it's showing on my screen, but it's not showing up there. Let me do the input cable here thing real quick. Input, HDMI, that's okay. That's what it's supposed to be. Technology's great, but it works. This was up there on the screen earlier, wasn't it, Brian?
Yep.
Maybe the computers. It's coming up on here perfect. In shovel. Okay, there, I've got my screen. Long gone. PowerPoint. Showing my computer, why isn't it showing what's on my computer?
Brian's pretty good with technology.
Yeah. Saying record slideshow, I don't record it from the beginning. I'm going to get it up on the screen. Oh, there we go. Bingo. Woo-hoo. All right, now we're talking business. Anyway, so it is required by Code of Iowa to have a library, to fund a library. How much you can fund it, of course, is based on funds available. I do want people to know that the library doesn't get a lot of money from the city. We are a city entity. The way our ordinance is set up, the city is our financial entity. They take care of paying our bills and all that kind of stuff. If we wanted to change that, we would have to change our ordinances. So that would be on a vote in a general election. If it would fail, we would have to wait four years before we could bring it again. Generally, because of best accounting practices and stuff, they recommend that the libraries do do all their funding and payroll and all that, all their finances are handled through the city. That way, I'm not responsible for anything. That's the city clerk's job. And that's the way ours is set up, and that's the way it will work. But we are allocated, the last few years, we have only asked for $4,500 for the library. So what I'm going to do tonight, real briefly, our revenue, our expenditures, our per capita revenue and expenditures, some of the services we provide, the programs that we've had, and this summer, every day we were open, we had some type of activity going for some different age group. Not everybody came to anything, everything, but at least we offered them. Our statistics, that's one of those small pages on the screen that you won't be able to see very well, really tiny print because every month we keep track of a lot of categories. And then I have our comparison, what we've done in several of those categories from FY15 through FY17. I've only been here, I got here at the end of eight, or March, in 2014, so that was fiscal year 15. So I have some of that data, and then from then on is my data. Comparison with peer institutions, and that is basically funding, expenditures, that sort of thing. Our future, and then a little bit of time for questions if anybody has any. Look at our budget. Last year, when we submitted a budget to the city council, we thought we might spend around $17,000. We have different streams of revenue, so we were asking the city for $4,500, which was 26% of our budget. State of Iowa, we estimated we'd get about $840. Donations, we were looking at 600. Our library board does fundraising, about $3,600. Fees and fines, $200. And then Wapow County, funding was $6,260, so it's 37% of our budget. What we actually brought in in revenue, we were $106 short of that $17,000, so we estimated pretty close. Our donations, we were over. That was 4%. Alliant Energy grant, that was part of our fundraising. State of Iowa is actually a little less than what we thought we might get. City of Blakesburg, $4,500, which was 27% of our budget. And Wapow County, that's $62, $5990, which was basically exactly what we had estimated we were going to have. Per capita funding, so we have 296 residents in Blakesburg, based on our last census data. So what the city gives us per year, in this last fiscal year, to operate on is $15.20 per person. When we add in our county funding, they gave us $21.14 per person. And when we put all of our fundraising and our grants and everything together, our revenue was $57.07 per person. City funding, 27% of our total budget. County funding, 37%. State funding, 44%. And then our library board, through our fundraising and donations and all that kind of stuff that we raise, we raise 32%. So we're actually contributing more toward the budget than the city is. This is our budget expenditures. We have line items, so this is how we came up with that $17,000 figure that we thought we were going to spend. We have all of those different line items there that we look at, salary, rental fees, our internet, what we're going to spend on materials. And the state of Iowa has standards for libraries. If we don't meet those standards, we don't get our state funding. So one of the standards is that you have to spend at least 10% of your total budget on the collection, so that they know you're getting materials that people will want to use in your collection. So that's what some of those are. And our books, our AV materials, our subscriptions. Bridges, Bridges is our online eBooks and audiobooks, and we spent, or estimated 340 on that. So those are what we thought we were going to spend, all those different categories. What we actually spent this year was $15,912.50. And one of the other slides, we show the differences, what we had budgeted, what we actually spent. So on the last slide, our salary, we had budgeted $10,400 or $10,500 or something. We actually only spent $9,500. We didn't spend as much on salaries as we thought we would. We didn't spend on the capital equipment. We had budgeted 300. We didn't spend it because we just got all new computers with a grant from the Legacy Foundation. So the money that we had asked the city to carry over into our account for next year was money that we want to build that technology account. And you can set a trust and agency account for your library to put that money in, and it can only be used for that purpose. We currently have one out there for a building fund. We could put one for a technology fund. And that way, we don't have to keep going back and saying, oh, all our computers are shot, we need to write a grant. We can use that grant money for other things, like programs and stuff. And that was part of our Legacy Grant. They want to give people money, but they want to know, okay, we're going to help you set up this program, what are you going to do to sustain it? And part of our plan to sustain it was to set up a fund and plan on rotating out two computers a year or something. And so we need to do that and set up the funds to do it. We did not spend any money on staff development. We had budgeted $100 for that. We didn't spend money on it because we did our staff development online free. Chris, sir, I'm required to be certified by the state. I have to take 45 hours of continuing education credit every three years to recertify. Chris is certified as support staff. She needs 30 hours of CE credit every three years to recertify. Fortunately, there are a lot of webinars we can do online for free, so we didn't spend money there. So we are trying to be very careful with our money and do what we can. So what we actually brought in in revenue, what we spent, $15,912.50. That remaining amount, and again, these are based on our records. I have not been able to get the report from City Hall so that we can compare them and make sure they're accurate. I keep all of my receipts, invoices, stats, timesheets, copies of everything are in a three-ring binder, broken out. Anybody can look at this. This is what I use to keep all my information in. I have a spreadsheet with my daily ledger in it and a spreadsheet with our budget, amount budgeted, amount spent, percentage of amount spent, what we have remaining. So this is why we ask at the end of the year to carry money over, so we can start that computer fund. What we actually spent per capita with all of our revenue and expenditures, $53.76 per person. Again, the city only spent $15.20 of that $53.76. The rest of it came from other sources. All of our money is funneled through the city. So when the city does its line item budget and says $15,000 for library, that's not the city giving us $15,000. That's all the money that we're bringing in and all of the money that we're spending shows up on that line item. And that's, I think a lot of people weren't aware of that, so I want to make sure they know that. This is our budget for fiscal year 17, all the different categories, what we had estimated we would spend, what we actually spent, how much we had remaining in that account, the percentage of that account that we had estimated we would spend. Now with our budget, we have all these line items, some of them we went over on. Outgoing postage. Silo, we do a lot of interlibrary loans. I actually send more books from our little library here in Blakesburg that only has about 7,000 items in the collection. I send more out of there to other libraries who want to borrow our books than I do at the college. At the college last year, I think I spent, or I sent maybe 70-some, and here we sent out 107 or something. I can't remember. It's on our, it's in our data there. But we did, and the good thing about it is, even though we overspent on that postage amount, we will be reimbursed for some of that postage, not all of it. So say we budgeted 300, and most packages were around $3 a package for me to mail, a regular book doing library rate. Last year, the state reimbursed us at $1.42 per package. So we got about half of it back. So even though I budgeted 300, part of that state money that comes into us is actually part of the reimbursement for that postage. So we're okay. If we go over in one area and under in another area, that's fine, as long as we don't go over on the whole budget. And this year, we actually underspent because we were trying to get our account going for our technology. So revenue, this is fiscal year 14 through 17 comparison. What we got, and this is comparing us with other libraries our size, and this is just the city funding. So there are, I think in fiscal year 14, there were about 132 size A libraries. Those are libraries in towns with less than 500 population. This data is coming from the State Library of Iowa's website. We received in fiscal year 14, $4,375 from our city. The average for Class A libraries from their city funding was over $9,500. And then you can see what it does. Fiscal year 16, we did receive a little more last year because we overspent last year. Had we known we were getting close to overspending, we would have cut our hours, we would have not purchased things, we would have tried to do more fundraising. Because I want to be fiscally responsible, and I do not want to overspend. When we set a budget, we want to stick to the budget, but because of the financial situation with the city last year, we could not get a statement from the city. Had we had that and known exactly where we were, we would have done a few things to make sure we didn't go over. Fiscal year 17, again, we're right back at that $4,500 from the city. Again, all of the state libraries will not have their data in until the end of October, so I won't get the fiscal year 17 data for the rest of the libraries until, till probably next spring. So this is our county funding. And again, Blakesburg is the blue, and you can see all the other counties that are in size A libraries are funding about twice the amount we get from our county. And that's because Wapow County is a poor county. We get that. State funding, we're closer to what the other libraries in our Class A are getting. Other government funding, fiscal year 14, we had an extra $1,000 from Wapow County. Ever since then, we haven't gotten any additional extra county funding, and for our size libraries, some of them are getting $400 or $500 a year on average. Let's see, what's next? This is non-government funding. So this is the grants and the fundraising. And you can see in every category, my library board is busting its butt and raising money, and we're writing grants, and we're bringing in a lot more percentage of our income than these other libraries are having to do. Total funding from all sources, again, these are all Class A. You can see Blakesburg, for the last four years, we've been pretty consistent. Fiscal year 14, $16,655. Fiscal year 15, $16,574. 16, $16,457. 17, we actually brought in more, $16,894. But you can see, those numbers were going down a little bit. And this last year, we brought in more. We started working with concession stands in junior high basketball games. That's one of our fundraisers. Per capita revenue, this is again, us compared to Class A libraries. And again, you can see, we're, we're the blue. This Class A is the green, so we're a little below. Now what I did, that was all of Class A. That was 132 libraries. This chart's a little small to read, but you can look at this on your own time. I found 11 cities that are very, very close to us in size, so we could get a better comparison. These are cities with between 280 and 315 population. There were 12 of them, counting Blakesburg. The average size was 299, so we're at 296. That says minus three. Yes, we're three less than the average. But if you look down in the blue where it says what our city funding for Blakesburg, and last year, we did get a little extra instead of that $4,500, we were still, what is it? Difference is $1,600, yes, from what we got for cities. And then you can tell the county what we did and the overall. So overall, for total income, for our peers, those that are just exactly our size, $6,000 less per year to operate on. And I'm not here to ask for more money. I just want to make people aware of what we're doing. This were our expenditures, our staff expenditures. In 14, we spent a little over $7,000. In 15, up to $8,700. 16, up to $10,000. And this last year, we actually went down on our staff. And you can see, compared to those other libraries, which are the dark blue, our library staff is making way less money. I'm not in this for the money, folks. I'm in here to make sure we have a good library. Our expenditures, these are for our collection. What we spent is in the orange. Other libraries, because they have more money to spend, are spending a lot more on their collections. These are the other expenditures. This would be the rent, the phone bill, postage, all that other stuff wrapped into these other expenditures. And again, we're spending less because we have less. Total expenditures, again, in 14, we spent over $16,000. Our average Class A library sent $22,000. $16,000, $23,000. $16,000, $23,800. And this year, we spent $15,912. I'm almost done. We're already at slide 25 out of 38. These were our per capita expenditures. So again, we started in fiscal year 14, we spent 56 per person. 15, we had $55.99 per person. 16, we had $55.60 per person. And this last year, we cut back, and it was only $53.76 per person that we spent. These are our peer-to-peer expenditures. And you can see our, these again, those 12 libraries that are in our class. We spent in fiscal year 14, or 16, excuse me, $10,075 on salaries, and our peers spent $14,000, so it was a difference of $3,900 and some. And you can compare each of those different categories that we spent much less. And overall, they spent $22,000, we spent $16,500. And those are, again, are those same libraries, they're exactly our size. Our services, we have a lot of services people don't know about. We can photocopy things, we can fax things for you, provide reference and research assistance. We get kids coming in doing homework reports, and we'll help them with that. Interlibrary loan, again, we send out a lot more books than we ever borrow, but I know Mrs. Chedister has borrowed some books on CD because she can no longer read, so she likes to listen to the audiobooks. We have some audiobooks, but not a huge collection. So if there's something that you want, I think Ed's borrowed some books through Interlibrary Loan, or Helen, we can get materials from other libraries. And that's part of that reciprocal sharing agreement. We will send our stuff to other libraries, but then they have to send them to us as well. Atumwa Library charges $2 per interlibrary loan. Right now, we're not charging. We don't have very many. I think last year, we had six or eight, not very many at all. Readers advisory, we can help you try to find a book. Wi-Fi access, we have a lot of people using our Wi-Fi down there. Through our Legacy Foundation grant, we have eight public access computers, all with Windows 10, all with Office 2016. So you can get Word, you can get Excel, you can get Publisher, you can get PowerPoint, anything you need. Meeting space, we have two 4H groups, we have the Ball Parents, we have the PTO, lots of people, different groups come in there and meet in our space when they need it. Notary service, this is something that I didn't know that, whether we had in town or not, so I became a notary. So if I'm there and people need something notarized, I can notarize materials for you. Library programs, the last two year, or last year, we started a Crazy Eight's Math Club. This is part of our STEM initiative. It's a free program. I'm all about the free stuff. Most of our furniture in the library that we have from other libraries, we have got for free. So I'm always out there looking to see what we can do. But this is a program from Bedtime Math, and it's, we did it for the third through fifth graders, but it's just fun math activities to reinforce math skills. We had a toilet paper Olympics, which was a hoot. They loved it. There was, and kids are doing things with computers, they don't even realize they're learning math skills. We had a deal where they were working with patterns, and one of the kids got done in like two seconds, and we're like, how did you do that so fast? He says, like, it's like mapping in Minecraft. He's learning patterns and math skills, even playing Minecraft. And they do play a lot of games on the computers. Sometimes we have Halloween parties, we've had game boards event. Every Thursday throughout the summer, we had a movie in the afternoon. We provided the pocket cell. Google, if you want to learn how to use, we had a whole class on Google Documents a year ago. Now that we got these computers, I offered Microsoft Office classes, nobody came, except to the Facebook class. I had somebody come for Facebook. So we will help you, we will do one-on-one, we'll do group sessions, whatever you want. STEM opportunities, again, that was like the Math Club. And we have, through our Alliant Energy grant, we bought some NASA little bits, electronics kits, and we also have snap circuits. Kids can build motors, they can build fans, they can build light switches, all kinds of things. And that's getting that STEM, science, technology, engineering, mathematic. We host a father-daughter dance every year as a fundraiser. This is a great community opportunity. We have daughters out there who maybe don't have a dad, so they'll bring grandpa or uncle or even their mom. We're not going to discriminate, we just want kids to come and have a great time. We had library karaoke this summer, that was pretty well attended by some kids. We've offered adult coloring classes, we've had Lego and video game events. I've got computer classes on there with, same as technology. Our summer reading program, our kids that participated in summer reading this summer read over 12,000 minutes. That was really well attended. And I offered some scrapbooking events, I got some scrapbooking materials, people could bring in their pictures, their stuff, and we could just scrapbook together, and again, nobody came. And all of these were advertised on our summer schedule. I guess maybe people were just busy or didn't really know what to do. Our collections, we have about 7,000 items cataloged. We do have an online catalog, an online circulation system. Again, me being the chief frugal person, I am, we started our online catalog for free. It's a program called Library Thing. Last summer, they offered a circulation component to it. Because we have under 10,000 items in our collection, that costs us $25 a month to have an integrated library and card catalog. At Indian Hills, we pay over $16,000 a year, just maintenance fees to maintain the system we have. So, and this is just as good, believe me, as what we have there. Doesn't run all the fancy reports yet, but they're working on it. In our adult fiction collection, in my listing here, I've got all the numbers, and maybe you don't need this, but I do have all the numbers of all the different books in that collection. We try to break it out evenly. We have over 2,000 adult fiction, 426 nonfiction. The young adult fiction and graphic novels, we have 630 YA and 57 graphic novels, 45 Christian fiction, 124 board books, those are the little hard books for the little babies, 1,600 children's fiction, 836 children's nonfiction, 507 DVDs, 94 audiobooks, paperbacks I haven't even counted yet this year. Large print, nonfiction, we have 16. We subscribe to 19 different magazines, all different things. Health, personal, Kiplinger's Personal Finance, Automobile, Good Housekeeping. We've had Boys Life, Girls Life, Field and Dream, all kinds of magazines for you there. We also subscribe to both, or we get the Atumwa Courier, and then we also get the Rocket. Everybody gets the Rocket. So we have those newspapers there that you can read. And we do have people that come in just to read the newspaper. Online services, we have ABC Mouse. I don't know, maybe you've seen these ads on TV. You can buy a subscription for home, from home, but you can come to the library and use it for free. It's early childhood education. Learning Express, this is a wonderful program. You can get homework help, test prep, those college entrance exams, computer skills, they have tutorials on, all those things that I was offering classes on. Vocational and career training, firefighter exams. You can get practice tests for that. All kinds of stuff through that database at our library. Gale Database, the Gale is one that we just got, Chilton's Automobile Repair. You can go in there and find out how to fix your 1957 Chevy or your, in my case, 2011 Dodge Grand Caravan. Wiring diagrams, repair schedules, all kinds of things in there. Credo Reference is over 700 full text reference books. That Gale Database has 50 different areas. Amazing stuff that you can get there for research. Health, culinary arts, cooking, there's gender studies, there's history, there's genealogy, just about anything you could possibly think of in that Gale area. Transparent Languages, if anybody wants to learn a foreign language, there's over 100 languages in there. And the Gale, the Credo, the Transparent Languages, you can get from home. You use a password or you use your library card to access them. If you've got internet, you can do any of that research, and you can learn the language at home. The language one, you will need a headset with a microphone, because it will say a phrase or a word, and it will have you repeat it, and you can see if you're getting the pronunciation correct and rework and that kind of thing. But it's just a really good program. It also works for people who are non-native English speakers and who are learning English as a second language. But there's reading, there's culture, there's music, there's videos, and then there's the, you speak it as well as reading it. Bridges eBooks and audiobooks, we have, I think there's over 30,000 eBooks, and there's, I think, nine or 10,000 or something like that audiobooks. I haven't seen the date yet for this year. These are books that you can download, if you have an MP3 player for your audiobooks or your computer. You can put them on a tablet, an iPad, phone. My son read, I don't know whether you're familiar with Game of Thrones, those books are like that. Jordan downloaded and read Game of Thrones on his phone, because he has the app. There's an app you get from the Google Play Store or the Apple Store, and you can download those. You can take three books at a time, they stay on your device for 14 days, they're automatically checked back in, no late fees, no overdos. And they're really good for people who have visual problems, because you can make the font bigger, and it's a whole lot lighter than holding a large print book. We have four tablets at the library that we received with an earlier grant from Alliant Energy. We've had classes with those tablets, and then we let people check those tablets out, take them home, practice using them. Cookie Allison was one who did that and ended up then buying her own tablet. She was going to go out and buy one first, and we said, use one, see if you like it, and if you do, then go buy one. You can check those out. Those are an Android operating system, just like most, a lot of your phones are. So they're, they're real easy for you to get, to use. Library stats, I'm not going to go through all this, but every month, I have to keep track of all these stats. How many people come in the library? How many adult fiction are checked out? How many paper books are checked out? How many, all these different categories. How many people are using the computers? How many people are using the Wi-Fi? We even keep track of how many people go to our website or our databases and all that kind of stuff. So all that stuff, I have to report to the State Library. And so we keep it. Every month, I just add the new totals, and at the end, the spreadsheet automatically adds them up, and then I have the previous year there as well, so you can do a comparison to see one year from the next how we're doing. That kind of shows trends. These are circ stats over the last three years. The blue ones are what we checked out. The yellow ones checked in, and the orange ones are our total circ stats. So you can see they're fairly even over the last three years. We've been circulating about the same number of books, total. Wi-Fi Use. Last year went way up, big time. We have a lot of people coming in and using the Wi-Fi. Archery Practice was in our gym, and all those parents were in there using it quite a bit as well. And then Regrory came through the previous year. We had really high visitor numbers and Wi-Fi use then as well. Actually, that was in this fiscal year, because it was in July of 16. So that helped account for some of our visits and our Wi-Fi usage. So there's this 16, our total number of visitors. And Future Plans. Upcoming, I'm almost done.
That's where I get it from.
Octo, huh?
That's where I get it from.
Oh, yeah. See, we can talk. We can talk. October 28th, we are having our Fourth Annual Crock Pot Cook Off. This town has wonderful cooks. What you need to do is get your recipe to me by the 21st. I will put it in a cookbook. On the 28th, you bring your crock pot with all your recipe already cooked in it. We plug it in, and then people come in. We give them a bottle of water, a spoon, and they go around to all the different foods, and they sample them, and they get to pick the, their People's Choice Awards winners. And so we give some prizes. We do a little fundraiser with this. Last three years, the Culinary Arts Program at the college has helped us out. They brought out a team of students to judge. We'll have to see, they have a new director, so we'll have to see if they're willing to do that. Even if they don't, we can choose our own winners, right? People's Choice Award. We do charge a little bit of a fee for people to get in, but you're getting your bottle of water, you're getting your cookbook to go home with you with that. So it's a, it's a good fundraiser. It's a lot of fun. It's a great time for people to just come and eat. And everybody thinks I'm only going to get a little sample, a little bite of every dish, and I don't want to pay $8 for that to get two bites. But by the time you get two bites of 30 or so different dishes, you're stuffed. And I had one little boy last year who came back up, I think about six times, for my molten lava cake. It was good. So I'm done talking. Does anybody have questions for me? I just want people, I will be doing my annual reports. Our annual report for the last three years is, at least, at least two years, maybe the third year, they're available on our website. You can go to our library, go about our library, find where it says annual reports, click on it, and pull them up. As soon as I get all of my data submitted to the State Library at the end of the month, I'll do it, just a simple two-page annual report. We'll have a lot of this data in it. And I won't, you can pull it off the web seat. I will make sure the council gets a copy of it as well for their files. But there's all of our contact information, my cellphone, as well as the library's phone, our webpage, our email address, our Facebook page. But, you know, when you looked at, I'm circulation staff, so it's one thing I was going to mention, I guess, before I shut up. So last year, we did circulate 2,094 items total, at a cost, average cost of $25 per item. If you had to go out and buy those books, it would have cost the residents of the city over $52,350. So when the city gives us per capita $15.20, and they would have spent, you know, that was 45, or $4,500 and $52,000 return on investment per person, that would have been about seven books per person and a $25 a book. That would have been about $175 per person. So again, $15.20 for $175 return on investment. And that's just the books we check out. That's not the databases. That's not the programming. That's not all the other things that we do. So we want everybody to be aware that the library is very considerate. We know we're using tax fund, taxpayers' money, but I also know my board works extremely hard to raise money that we couldn't do anything near what we're doing if the board didn't do that. And the Friends of the Library, they have been great donors. We have individual donors. John Goddard. I'm always available to answer anybody's questions. I keep all of my data, again, in a three-ring binder. We have spreadsheets with all of our budget information on it. We do a full budget, like I showed you, how much we spent every, of each category. We do that every month. So people, the, my library board can see exactly what we've been spending and where our money's going. So, no questions?
First off, Linda, thank you for coming in and explaining some of this.
Thank you.
Probably are not aware of everything you can do. I would have been wanting to say, like, Hertfordville, what's the shape our city in, is in, you know, what's the advantage of trying to join another town? But I don't see that as an option after all this.
And honestly, I've spoken with Sonia Farrell at Atoma about that, and she would charge you exactly what you're already paying for us, or more, and then the people wouldn't have services here in town.
Yeah. No, what you're doing is great. And I think something we need to do is try to figure out how to advertise, because there's a lot of stuff here people don't know about. A lot of stuff that people in this town do not know about.
And one thing we are going to try to start doing, I think, is going to be offering a Thursday night movie. I've been reading on Facebook how they used to have Wednesday night movies in the park. One last thing, and I will promise, shut up, I promise. Our state standards have changed. And we are currently a Tier Two library. There's Tier Zero, Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. We are a Tier Two. We've never been able to be a Tier Three, because we never had fully handicap accessibility with our restrooms down at that old school. We're not. There are things that they have now moved, in order for us to get any state funding, you have to be at least a Tier One. They have moved some things that used to be Tier Three level into the Tier One level. So after the first of the year, one of the things that they are requiring us to do is to come up with a three-to-five-year strategic plan. And so what we are going to do, we have a consultant coming in, and it's free. She's from the State Library. She serves the southeast Iowa regional area. She's working with Atoma Public Library and Molton Public Library right now. But she is going to come in and facilitate this process for us. It's called Planning for Results. And we are going to be looking for community stakeholders who are willing to get involved. We'll have some meetings, not too many, but some meetings. We would like to have organizations, city government, business, education, churches, anybody who's interested in trying to move our city forward to come and participate. Becky Heil is going to facilitate it. She'll come to a couple of the meetings and get us started. It will involve a survey. We've got a community survey already ready to go. We worked with regional planning on that. But we need to get stakeholders, and what we want you to do is come together and think about what we can do for our community. Just at the Corn Carnival last week, I noticed we need lights in the park. We need to maybe turn some trees. We need maybe a better stage. That's not necessarily something the library can do, but that might be one of the types of things that comes out in that meeting. And what we, as a library board, that are going to do is say, okay, these are the things the community wants. What can the library do to help facilitate it? And that's where we will be building our three-to-five-year plan. But I know there are some people that want to get involved and see what we can do. It's not going to cost a ton of money, or that we can get grants to do and move things forward. But I think this will be a great way to have somebody from the outside come in and facilitate it for us. And, but that will be coming after the first of the year, so I just wanted to give you a heads up. All right. Thank you. I will shut up. Sorry, Jay. You get it from me.
All good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I would want to take Carol's down later, but I will unplug this. I don't want anyone to trip on the cord.
And then we'll go on to the consent agenda.
I did have a couple of questions about that. This was awesome. I want to say that. You prepared that. Whoever prepared that, that was great. That's something we haven't had for quite some time.
I didn't.
That's what I said. That's what I'm.
It was a team effort.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do, I really appreciate that. There was a couple of questions I did have. We approved the road use report, and I was just curious if that available cash included the, what should be set aside as the road use money? And, because that would really cut into our available cash. You know what I'm saying? Because that means that money needed to be set aside in another savings account or fund. And that's why I didn't know how that.
I think what's important to remember with that particular report, Jason, is it is a snapshot in time.
Right, right. And that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But, and I know we do have, I mean, property tax money coming in and everything, so I just, I didn't know if that was something going forward, if we could add that into the savings account, make sure that, I mean, I say going forward, all those little, every little fund. Would that be the only other one that we'd be looking at?
Well, no, if you're going to do that, you're going to end up with a whole bunch of little funds.
But that's, I mean.
But you need, that should be kept track of on the cards. The cards are set up. All we need is information from Ted, and then go ahead to start with that.
Okay.
You pay attention to your cards and your line item when you start spending money.
I was told that having a lot of bank accounts can muddy the water.
Yeah.
Hard to.
And I agree with that.
Keep track of.
Yeah. But just as long as, like, I think that's something that you've talked about is, you know, if somebody doesn't know what they have in their phone, like the library, they want to come in and they just want to look at the card and see the card. If we had that, I mean, if that was put on.
Soon as we get a starting number, the cards will be.
And we can list that, and we can list that in here. Like, I think that's what you said, like agency does.
They've got a great system down there that's just, it's almost too much information, but compared to what we have, it's a lot of information. It's usable information. It's a percentage of a budgeted item, how much we've used, and we can look at it, and something comes up. Maybe the, something that's a want-to may have to get put off. But we have that, we have that right there every month, you know, what we have available.
That's what I said. I mean, for four months now, there's something like this, and this is great. Appreciate it. Much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Bob, did you have a question about the building permit across into Monroe and Waplo? Or are we good to?
Unless somebody wants to, is it Mr. Houston? His house is in Waplo and Monroe County, and he's put in for a building permit here. So I went this morning to, down to the, I think it's G.I.S. down in Waplo County. And sure enough, the county line goes almost through the middle of the house. The Fishers used to say when they were having breakfast in the kitchen there in Monroe County, and when they were watching TV, they were in Waplo. But the house is taxed, assessed and taxed in Waplo County. Buildings, outbuildings and everything else from Monroe. So I guess, you know, he was good enough to ask us for a building permit, I think we should go ahead with it.
Monroe Street, which would be the one that goes around by the, by the church, the Christian church down there?
Is it to the west or the south?
It's to the west. Yeah, it goes to the west. Yeah, but it, but it's attached to the house, and the house is taxed in Waplo County, so it would be, everything's good, everything checked out. Okay, everything checked out. Does everything else? So, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I will second the motion. Motion by Leffler, seconded by Chisman, to accept the consent agenda. No As.
Aye.
Nays. Three As. One A. Okay, carried. Now, we've got reports coming in here. No, I just wanted to say that I'd like to thank everyone who worked on the 113th Corn Carnival. I think it was a good success. There were lots of volunteers. Needless to say, I didn't get to participate in it, but everything I've heard, everybody seemed to think it went over real good. And then we've had some problems this last week with the flow meter down in the dunes. But with the help of Jill Kirk and some others, they've got it at work again. And we've got documents and information currently requested from Ted Nelson have been sent to him. So thanks to Jason Myers. He helped us out a lot on getting our electronic files to the city computer. And we ought to be thankful for Jason and Patty. They've done a lot on this. And I'd like to recognize Bob Chisman. He donated a check back for his approximate council wages for the year. He donated back to the city. And I think we'll thank Bob for that. And this year, we've, we've been awful lucky in town on the trick-or-treat and the hollies. And it is something I would be grateful for. I think, and that about does that. We need a resolution. Resolution 17 dot 10 dot 9 dot 10. Bring job description for city clerk position. I need a motion to.
I make a motion that we approve the job description for the city clerk.
I'll second.
Motion made by Leffler, settled by Thompson. And we'll have a whole call vote on this. Myers, he's absent. Chisman.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Leffler.
Aye.
Ms. Farn, absent. Or I, the resolution 17 dot 10 dot 9 dot 1. Resolution. 17 dot 10 dot 9 dot 2, through rate of pay for city clerk position.
Could we amend that by chance? Could we amend that by chance? Because I think the 1050 is a great starting wage, but I think maybe after a 90-day probationary period, we go to a 30-day period.
Yeah, we need.
Can we put that in that resolution, or is that something that has to be?
I think we'll have to do it later.
Okay, do it on another day?
I think, once we find out where we're at, I think we all realize that if we're getting the work done, we're not paying enough money.
That's right. If we're going to keep a good clerk, you don't want to include that in this now. We just want to wait and see where we're at.
I think so. Yeah, like the 90-day year.
That's what, and that's what I was going on.
Because you can revisit the city anytime you want to.
Okay.
It's already tied up, so.
Okay, that's fine. I was just, that's what I said. I was just curious. I saw that wasn't in there. I think that was.
We're not going to go down the road open to anything, you know. We just, we got to look at everything, so. Find out what works. Before you find out, you can't get much for $10 an hour.
$10.50 for a rally.
That's right. Starting out, trying to find somebody, you'd think you, you need to make it appealing. Motion. I'll make a motion that we, resolution 17 dot 10 dot 9 dot 2, establishing the rate of pay for the city clerk position for 32 hours per week at $10.50 per hour.
You have a second?
Motion made by Chisman, seconded by Thompson. And a little call vote. Chisman.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Leffler.
Aye.
All ayes. Now, number nine, Hartman, city clerk.
Yeah? I just had, and it's been brought to my attention by some people, about, I mean, I think we're all in agreement, who were gonna hire, and that's great, but training certain person. I think the last, were you trained by a mentor, you mentored ever by anybody, is that?
I was mentored by Cindy.
By Cindy, okay, so you were, but who had, I think, two of the three other ones that we've had here recently, or three out of four, have not been, I don't think, got the proper training that they need. I've seen what our part-time employee with Kaid has done, I think that's great, I think until we get all that stuff straightened out with Ted, that she stays on, but I am gonna recommend that we bring a mentor in as well. I know we really don't have a lot of money right now, but this is gonna save us money in the long run to bring in a mentor to work with her, to work with Anna after we do this, so I don't know if that's not something that's on the agenda here, but I would definitely, I think moving forward, we don't wanna set somebody up to fail, and I'm not so sure that hasn't happened in the past, so it's my opinion that, that when we do this hiring, we need to get, get a mentor in here with her, and I think we keep it temporary until as long as we're getting work done.
We've got some of those.
That we've got stuff that needs done, and that's what I said, that sometimes spending a little money now is gonna save us money in the long run, so I guess that's how I feel about it, and I'm gonna be Donna to the punch, I'm gonna make a motion that we hire Anna Hartman.
I'm gonna second.
Motion made by Leffler, accepted by Thompson, for Anna.
Michael, would you like to stand up so everybody can see who you are? This is Anna, and we are tickled to death to have her.
What's her last name, where's she?
Hartman.
Hartman, I'm from Atumwa.
Well, you're from Atumwa.
There you go. I think I went to high school with your kid, I'm not sure.
Hey, Jason, on the mentoring thing, will the League of Cities help out with some of that?
Yes, that's a, that's what I was referring to, is a mentor from the League of Cities, it is a, it will cost us money, but there's three in our area, one from Tamo, one from Coal FedEx, and one that lives down the street, so, I think, going forward, hopefully, get in here and get proper training, and Anna will knock one out of the park for us, and then, I mean, I wanna say, she killed it in her interview, it was awesome, she did very well, so.
Cindy, that this has a system and agency we keep talking about, we'll gladly talk over the phone and possibly could, I won't guarantee that if we're really in a pinch, she might help getting that system out, because I'll try to get some of that stuff so you can look at it, and I haven't shown it to Jason yet, I've shown it to a few because.
I know a little bit of it that you brought up.
But it's a wonderful system, I hope we can adopt it, because it's just, it works on a lot of levels, it has information that goes into the preparation of the A F R, and it just, I can't say enough good about it. Now, so we have a load on this. Four A's.
Aye.
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 Three I's, nays, zero. Well, we have got a clerk.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. Now, whole business, we've got. Estivation contractors, serve water lines, laser farms. And, I don't know if we need to discuss on this.
I do believe we did approve Michael to do work for the city in July, or January. He would like to come up and meet with us, I ran into him to hi- you last week, and he did say he'd like to come speak at a council meeting, we could get him on the agenda, so if at all possible, we could get him on.
That would probably be good for the next meeting.
In November.
And we could discuss all this stuff with him. Yeah, yeah. We need to get going on this, for sure. But it looks like we've got some discrepancies in our city ordinances that somewhere down the road, maybe we better take a hard look at, and we don't wanna do anything to keep from getting somebody hired immediately, but I think one of the laws was a thousand and one was five thousand, and, probably need to look at that a little more.
And he's bonded for ten thousand.
No, that's a, yeah, that was in his, that law.
He'd have to be bonded specifically to Blakesburg, or?
Bond doesn't include Blakesburg.
His bond doesn't include Blakesburg.
Yeah, I know, okay, it could, probably, if we could take care of that.
Bonding law is ten thousand, so we, yeah, we'll have to, that's what.
Definitely gonna have to have somebody when we start working on our bills project, so, we gotta have to, in case we get some stock valves we can't turn, so, gotta be in place.
Um, he suggested meeting with a couple councilmen before he comes before the council, just to kinda get a plan of attack, I think if someone was on there.
Yeah, so it's the bond here.
Yeah, so, I don't, that's that, in, we call a primary person responsible, P P R, so, you know, somebody wants to own one or two councilmen, wanna own, kinda talking to him before the next council meeting to kinda get something going, I think he'd really like to talk to him a small group first, Jason.
Bob, I'm the least mechanically inclined person on the council, so would you be interested in talking to Michael?
Yeah.
I'd listen to him personally. Code book is our book, too, because we code book them now.
That's the one we go, moving forward, that's what, we just kinda ensure that that happens, and notify everybody that's got enough property in town, that that's, that's the procedure.
Well, I have, I have one right now, where somebody moved out on Friday and somebody else moved out on Saturday, so tomorrow morning, I'll be knocking on their door telling them they need to be up here and see me before the end of the day, for the world, we shut off Wednesday.
And the way I read it, Donna, the, the city, I think it says minimal or, or whatever, we can do three months on a tenant, on deposit, and if they're, and if they're good people, when they move out.
If they're good people and we tell them they need to get up here and take care of their deposit, then we don't have to worry about that.
Right, so you got the three months, and when they move, we give it back to them as long as they're gonna pay the bill.
I'd like to put another plug for agency, they have an account down there where they strictly hold the money, that's deposit money, I say, they have, they have an account where they hold the deposit money, so it's not co-mangled, so when somebody moves out, if they don't have a bill, they get their deposit.
Oh, yeah, they get their deposit back, sure.
They have, they have a specific deal, so you can.
If they don't have a delinquent water bill.
Yeah, if they got a delinquent water bill, well, under the right system, and that's the way that three months is geared, even, I think I've been reading this right, they've gotta have a notice, you know, we're, we just can't go out and do like that, we gotta get them a right to a hearing, but even if we take three months down, under the, if the system's running the way it should.
We don't.
Yeah, we'll have, they'll be shut off before they're into the deposit, pass the deposit, so it shouldn't be a problem.
We only take a hundred and fifty on that.
We're gonna move on here.
All right.
Okay, go ahead.
Now, new business, we've got evaluation and servicing of winterizing city clerk. I don't think we really need to approve this, but it's just something we need to do before the winter comes here, because we don't even know when those servers lie, have no idea.
I guess the only question being, where we, like Bob was mentioning earlier, where we're gonna take it to service, does it matter in how many, is that, that's?
It don't really matter, and if, you might agree on.
I was gonna say, I think when Dave had servicing done, that was out at Thompson's?
Yeah, it's out of property records.
So they might have record of the last time it was up there or what was done.
It's been ages, that's a thing.
It's been ages, but I can ask, I can ask Ronnie what was out there last.
It was out there when I first came to office, because they were working on an electrical problem with the, I don't know whether it was the hoist or the blade, but it was out, I just, I wanna go out and look at it.
They're supposed to come and get my car tomorrow, I'll ask him, I'll ask Ronnie if he can check back in his records and see the last time they serviced.
I guess I get, I don't know why we even really need to, as long as we know.
It just needs to be done.
Get it serviced.
It needs to be done before. So we need to address that safety clutch issue. Yeah, a lot of little things, but it does need.
So, that's just, it's a word, but on the light bill, it's just gonna be done.
Yeah, just means serviced.
Do I need to determine whether or not some book?
Matter of me, if you got a agreement.
It just needs to be done.
They've always, they've always done, if he's always done it, that's what we should say. If he's always done it, it does.
Is it a good time to start a logbook and keep the logbook in the truck now?
Dave had one.
I think it would be a good, good.
We'll check in the log box or something, see if it's in there still, it might still be in the truck, right? I mean, okay.
I guess I'm in the mind, we need to, I realize we got money issues, but we need to try and take care of this stuff we have, because we can't afford to buy something new right now.
There's needs and there's wants, that's a need that I understand.
Yeah.
It's not like we're.
The chances of another winter with no snow are pretty slim, I'd say. It's worse than last winter. We don't agree, but just take it out here. And then, we've got a request for the city to vacate the alley on the west side of Law twelve and nineteen of Lake Bird Post Edition.
This is something, Donna, has this been visited one other time, yes or no?
Mm-hmm.
And it was refused due to safety concerns, correct?
Yeah.
So I guess.
I know, I had some foreign concern for one night, so it did.
I just don't see, I mean, I don't, I empathize that if there's been an ongoing issue, that if it's a personal matter between two parties, I don't think the city necessarily needs to get involved in a personal matter, I think that we would be overstepping our bounds greatly, by doing something like that.
If we sell, there has to be public hearings, and I probably did, you probably didn't get one.
Yeah, I did, yeah, I did, it's a hearing.
So it's, I must say it's not doable, but we would have to appraise it and go through the steps, public hearing, and before we disposed of it.
I just don't.
We didn't have that alley across the bridge that were praised.
That one in an open alley. It's a water. There are, there are no utilities running down it, but.
Like I said, if it's, if it's me, I think, I mean, I don't know who's been jamming this with, I don't care, I, I mean, if it, with, it's a, to me, it's a legal issue to contact somebody, sheriff's office or what have you, then, I mean, this would be something that I don't necessarily think we should touch. And I don't, I mean, that's no.
Take a motion for.
Somebody just needs to make a motion.
I make a motion that we don't.
To, to vacate the alley.
I make a motion that the city does not vacate the alley on lots, twelve and nineteen of Blakesburg's first edition.
Motion was made by Leffler, need a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Chisholm. Do not vacate the alley. And have a vote of ayes.
Aye.
Nays. Three A's. Zero nays. Now, I'm just a motion to adjourn.
Can I get one more thing in on new business, real quick? I contacted Mickey from the League of Cities, because there's been a lot of talk about people wanting to maybe give the candidates that are running for council and mayor just a chance to see, kinda maybe talk about what their vision going forward is for Blakesburg. I don't know if any council persons would be, would wanna sit in on something like that, but in that case, that somebody, everybody would wanna come and, and hear people speak. I, I contacted Mickey to see if that would constitute a form, Mickey Shields, the League of Cities, he said that if we do that, many cities do do that, and there's, if the city wanted to kinda sponsor it or whatever, and everybody'd be welcome to come, every council member, every towns person, post a notice, that would be an agenda, but the agenda would be very brief and say, city council candidate for, inform, various issues will be discussed, but no votes will be taken, and then somebody would have to be there to take minutes, because it would be a city sponsored event. I just think something like that, to hear people's views, I mean, like I said, we're kinda in a bind financially, and there's people maybe don't know who's running, and it'd be nice to get something like that out. Meet the candidates, yeah, just so everybody come up and give arrangements to city.
Women's League of Voters, sponsor, maybe something like that.
City residents? City residents?
Well, that's what I mean, to be open, open to the public. I guess I would pay to rent, like, the community building, or even if we did it in conjunction with, for, I don't know how busy your cook-off thing is, that, that.
Paying more people there.
That's what I mean, and I would be willing, I mean, that would help the library, plus it would help, just kinda something that we could kinda tie two things together, perhaps. I mean, and it's food for thought, and I guess I can be in touch with you, and talk to you guys about it later, I just wanna put it out there, and if we're gonna do it, I'd like to get it scheduled so people can make arrangements, anybody that wants to hear what the candidates have to say, and get, make sure all the invitations get extended to the people who are running. I said it'd be, I know they did it there a few years back, and there was a lot of reservations and everything. You weren't in favor of it, not like it?
I never would have been.
Never would have been?
It's interesting, the party, you know, that.
I said, I'm set on ground rules with exactly what.
Hope it doesn't turn into.
Personal attacks.
Something other than what we wanted to be.
Exactly. Okay, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. I'll second it.